I was once lost, now I'm back to my roots.
Yeah, Charlie.
I was once lost, now I'm back to my roots. The water and the air and the earth and the fire. My. Mud in the wire. Now I breathe a little deeper, I'm not as tired. That is my, that is my. I got the village kids dancing with the black kids.
What's your name?
From the USA.
Coffee.
And we never leaving. It's a vibe, it's a feeling, you can see the ancestors smiling from the ceiling. I got the village kids dancing with the black kids from the USA and we never leaving. It's a vibe, it's a feeling, you can see the ancestors smiling from the ceiling. Spirits talking to me. They telling me that I should never leave. This is where I'm supposed to be. I can hear the spirits talking to me.
Gems PA here live from Ghana, West Africa. In the studio is the amazing Wright Media Center currently. City Councilman for the city of Muskegon Heights Ronald Jenkins is in the studio. How you doing today, brother Jenkins?
I'm blessed, man, blessed, man. How about yourself?
Doing great, doing great, man. You got, uh, what, six days left before election?
Yes, man, yeah, I can't wait till it's over, man. You know, I don't too much like this politics stuff, man. But hey, it is what it is, just gotta get it over.
Is the campaign signs out? Everybody got the signs out now?
Yeah, I'm actually seeing, I'm seeing more signs out. Well, just from three of the candidates, I see three sets of signs out. But, um, you know, everybody's doing it their own way, so. Getting it out there, man.
How is team Jenkins doing?
Man, we're doing great, man. We're, we're doing great. I'm just really proud of the effort that those people who volunteer and stepping up to say, hey, we want to retain you and keep you in this position. And wanted to continue to see you doing some amazing things. And so I'm pretty excited about it.
For you personally, this has been a, a journey. You know, you, you went through a major surgery not too long ago. Can you talk about that and how has that energized you?
Yeah, man, you know, um, you know, it's, it's a blessing, man, to continue to be able to, number one, just to be alive, you know, um, I'm a cancer survivor. Um, and that's one of the things that, that drives me every day. Uh, I, I continue to hear people talking about some things of how people don't make meetings and don't do this and don't do that, the dedication, the commitment. Um, and one of the things that I strive mean the day before I had my surgery. I mean, we were in a late night meeting and I had to tell them like, listen, hey, you guys up here, we're, we're complaining, we're not getting things done and we're doing this. And tomorrow morning at eight thirty in the morning, which is less than 12 hours from now, um, I'll be on the surgery table, you know, undergoing cancer surgery. And that was about the first time that I had announced it in that during that February time period. So, but it's just, man, um, to be alive, man, and to be able to try to help our community and continue to help our children, um, is very important to me. So it's just something that we just gotta try to keep doing.
What are you proud of so far?
Well, I'm proud of the, the things that I've learned so far at PA, to be totally honest. My first couple of years in, um, I, I've always, I mean, I'm born and raised here in Muskegon Heights, and so I have always knew the ins and outs to our city, uh, knew the ins and outs to some of the, um, the infrastructure, the, the good and the bad of Muskegon Heights. However, um, but these last couple of years, man, especially this last year, uh, I've learned how to deal with a lot of things totally different. When I, when you start talking about, um, our revenue, we start talking about our water, we start talking about so many different things, our budget. Man, it's a lot to learn and you're not getting that stuff overnight. And, uh, these last couple of years, I've, I've gotten a lot wiser into, um, dealing with city management more and more than anything.
Well, how is, uh, how's council getting, getting along right now?
Well.
And we don't expect everybody to be 100% on everything. Of course, everybody got their own opinions and things, but are you getting things done?
Well, that's a disappointment, PA. Um, and I think we've been saying this, uh, quite a bit. I mean, I say, you know, I'm there, so I'm like, do we all get along? Yeah, do we get along during the meetings? Probably not. Um, and I, you hear me keep saying debates are, you know, all debates are not bad, all disagreements are not bad. Sometimes, you know, you have the good and bad that goes along with it. The disappointing thing is that we don't get business done when that is all said and, and done. So we still have to be able to debate, we gotta still be able to disagree, but we gotta be able to move the city forward and take care of the business of the city. And that's one of the things that, that I keep talking about is being a team and, and forming a team that we all can, uh, collaborate and get some things done.
Now, we heard about some of the council people not showing up to different committees, certain committees not even meeting for a long time. How is your attendance when it come down to, uh, the committees that you sit on?
Well, honestly, I don't, I don't miss, um, I don't miss meetings unless I notify the council as a whole that I'm not going to be there. I also would notify the clerk, um, if I'm not going to be there. And the only time I have missed is my vacation. You know, and maybe if I had something that work, I may have to leave a little early, um, to get back to the school, but nine out of 10, I'm there. Uh, I take full commitment to, to the position, to the title, um, because that's what I committed to. Um, and I always tell everybody, me, if, if we're not going to be there, there's still, you know, a way of doing things. Let, you know, notify the clerk because she's the official record keeper of the city. And it's always good to keep everything documented on to who's not there and why you're not there. And then it's up to the clerk to be, to distribute that information to the rest of the council. Um, but I think one of the things that we have not gathered is everybody should be, uh, responsible to one another and, and committed to one another. But again, we have those disagreements to where we have not came together as just one solid unit yet. I mean, we're getting better than what we were, but we just haven't came to that solid unit just yet.
What's the problem with, uh, what's been the hurdle on picking a permanent city manager?
Well, everybody getting on the same page. I mean, we, we just waste a lot of time, to be totally honest. I mean, we waste a lot of time doing nothing sometimes. And that's, that's bothersome because, excuse me, from a business standpoint, we have to be able to move forward. Whether we agree or disagree, the fact of the matter is we're a multimillion dollar business. And being in that position, we have to be able to move things forward and, and take care of things. And being able to all see, there's not gonna, we're not gonna find a perfect person to fill those positions. And I think that's what we, we miss sometimes. We, I think we think that whatever city manager we're going to come or going to come before us, they're going to be this perfect person. I think a lot of times from what I gather, and I'm just gonna be honest, is that we look to find ways or find reasons why we don't bring someone in. Instead of finding reasons why we should bring that person in. We've had some great individuals that came before us, um, two to be exact, that I can, that I can pinpoint. And we allowed them to go by and a lot of it was just procrastination. And, and it's not from all council, it's not from the entire council. It's just the process was procrastinated and we missed out on a couple of good people that we should have had in place. And that was very disappointing to me. I mean, there was many times I just wanted to say, man, I just want to throw my hands in, throw my hands up and say, man, listen, we're not going to try to do anything. Why am I even here? Why am I, it seem like I'm wasting time. But I know I'm not, PA. I know that, um, the time that I'm putting in and dedication, if, if I don't do it, again, my mentality is who else is going to do it? Who's else going to put that time, that energy in or that commitment to say that we have to fight if nobody else fight for ourselves?
Ronald Jenkins in the studio. We, we're talking about election, which is happening next week, Tuesday. Online question, Benita Jackson says, are there residents on the committees? How can residents join these committees?
Yeah, Benita, I think she asked me that, um, at the debate. So she is, she is one of the ones that, that's continually to ask. And one of the things that I say is definitely, uh, when it comes down to the residents on the committees, um, that is something that the mayor, um, appoints. So you definitely have to get to, get with the mayor. We can definitely, uh, get the information to the mayor, but she is the one ultimately that makes that final decision on who sits on what committee and even the function of those committees. So we have to, um, get back with the mayor and ask the mayor how these things are going to go or the residents can say, or be persistent to say that we want these things to, uh, get a little bit more movement and traction.
Are the, are the personnel committee, finance committee, are they, are they meeting monthly?
Well, we, we meet, I could, I sit on the personnel committee. So, um, we are scheduled to meet every, every month, but no, we don't meet every month. Um, and for whatever reason, we just don't, we don't meet every month.
What about the finance committee?
Uh, I don't sit on the finance committee, so I can't really say how often they meet. But what I can say, um, is that, no, they were not meeting for a long time there. Uh, we hear a lot of these talks about, well, the finance committee this and the finance committee that, there was a time that, no, they were not meeting and not getting the information that they should have been getting to be able to report that back to the full council. And so when I hear those types of things, it kinda, it frustrates me a little bit because again, at the end of the day, I say, let's just be totally honest, let's be upfront, uh, with, with our people. Number one, we gotta be upfront with ourselves. Let's not lie and be deceiving or deceptive to ourself. And let's tell the truth about what's really happening. And if you're not meeting or if I'm not meeting, be honest and say, hey, I'm not meeting like I should.
So who sits on the finance committee? Who sits in the finance committee?
Um, right now, uh, there's, uh, the chairs, Andre Williams, I believe, Mayor Pro Tim Kelly Kitchen and, and then, uh, Councilperson LaShay Simmons.
And they have went a certain amount of time, they need a quorum, right? And, and there are other people that sits on this committee?
Well, there's, there's two, two of the three, two, two of the three in any committee, two or three has to meet. Um, in this upcoming or this past year, um, they have done outstanding job. They had been meeting, um, quite a bit. But again, some of these things that from committees, and I'm not just gonna point out the finance committee because that's just not the only issue or the problem. But because you asked it, and I'll answer that question because I got.
I only ask because we, we have a financial problem in the city, in the city of Muskegon Heights.
And that's why.
If any committee should be meeting, the finance committee should be meeting probably weekly.
Yeah, and that's why I, I'm, I'm asking, answering that question to the full extent and to be totally honest. Uh, like I said, these last, these last six to eight months, they have been meeting regularly and trying to get caught up on some things. But prior to that, um, last year, prior to that, no, they were not meeting. They were not meeting like they, like they should have or like they wanted to. And, um, you know, it would, it would just did not get the information to the full.
What about zoning committee?
Uh, I'm not for sure who's on the zoning committee at all either.
Right. Now, what committees do you sit on? Personnel, is there another committee?
Um, the only other, I sit on the committee, um, with, um, with, with the planning. I do sit on the, with the planning commission, planning committee, I believe, I think it is. But we don't meet at all. That's the one with, um, uh, over in, over in the inspections part, but we don't meet at all.
Okay. Wow. What do you plan to do different this upcoming four years? What do you plan, what do you want to see different within the council, within the city of Muskegon Heights?
Well, one of the things do, I, I really do want to see us get the work of the city done. Uh, we have to make decisions and not procrastinate on decision making. Uh, so being able to collaborate and to, you know, there's a give and take on this thing and learning a whole lot again, over the last few years, give and take on some issues and some, some items that may be important now, but not may, some things that may not be as important as the others, as it, as it is today. You gotta give and take and try to move some things forward. Um, and so that's, that's one of the things that I want to see us do differently is to be able to move business. I mean, we have to increase our revenue and that's one of the things that are, a lot of our council people are, um, are really talking about that we're meeting, but we have no meetings that's talking about how to increase revenue. We're not talking about anything. We're spending money that we have just from our regular budget, but we're over budgeted. And so we are in the red. And when you're hearing people say, well, no, we're not, or, or, you know, we're, we're, we're in the black, no. That's not true. I mean, we are in the red. We, we're sinking slow and we have to do some things differently than what we've done in the last 10, 15 years, especially 20 years. We had to do things different. So there's some just different decision making, some policy changes, some cultural changes that we have to make in order to be able to move the city to, uh, Muskegon Heights in another direction.
Wow. We're talking to, uh, Ronald Jenkins, uh, city councilman, city of Muskegon Heights. He, he is on the ballot next week. Early voting has started. I'm speaking to you from Ghana, West Africa. I got something up on the screen to those watching online. The African American mirrors USS trade mission to Ghana. I'm meeting with Marcus Mohammed, mayor of city Benton Harbor. He is in Ghana right now. He just got done meeting with the president of Ghana along with other black mayors from America. And I see how he's fighting. He's met with people, um, here in Ghana about contracting with Whirlpool and how that would bring more jobs to Benton Harbor. I seen him, uh, on trying to negotiate things for housing, uh, for, for his people. He's doing a lot of hard work and it makes me proud to see somebody like that. I just wish we can get this kind of fight from our, our community.
Well, OPA, one of the things that you're talking about is me, something that I, we continue to say, we have to put ourselves in position and we have to sit at the right table with the right people. And until or unless we get ourselves in the right place and we make time for ourselves to be able to collaborate with others outside, not just out of Muskegon County, not just out of sight of the state of Michigan, but in other states and other, like you, like you said, even other countries, just to see how other things are happening. There are, there are so many more opportunities that are out there. We just have not taken the time and opportunity to sit at the table. And that's one of the things that we have to be selfless and make time so that we can do some things different. And that's, you know, being able to create friends, uh, amongst your enemies, that's, that's huge. We gotta get out of that mindset that Muskegon Heights is going to operate and survive by ourselves. Again, I say this, I mean, we were brought up that way, like keep things in Muskegon Heights, whatever happens in Muskegon Heights, whatever happens at home, it stays there. But that was the way that our grandparents, they were raised. But as we got older, we're starting to see that is not necessarily true. Because if you don't, if you're not able to, uh, speak and talk and, and be friends and do some things with other people, you're not going to be able to be self-sufficient, not in, not in, not in the culture of today's life.
Uh, Brian Clancy has a question. Muskegon Heights has water capacity too for income. Is it too late to get into the green era? Could there be some bottled water by Muskegon Heights?
Great question, Brian. Um, I tell you what, this has been a conversation for four years. I've been on the council for four years. This has been a conversation that again, that goes nowhere. We don't take it off the table. We don't finish business. We don't finish conversations. We go from one, from one item to the next item to the next item without finishing it. With our water filtration plant and our distribution, uh, thankful to, uh, council woman Sims, who's not going to be returning to the council, but she put a lot of more emphasis on this here as she's going out. As we've been really dealing with the water, um, issue and the water filtration plant, these last, probably last four or five months to be exact. Uh, we're saying there are some things that has to happen, some things that can happen differently, um, in the city of Muskegon Heights. There is no better water in the state of Michigan outside of Muskegon Heights. From Lake Michigan, we have our water filtration plant that comes directly into us. People want our water, people need our water. And yet we are not being the consumer to be able to say, well, we're going to sell, we're going to distribute. We're sitting back thinking that, oh, well, it's ours, so we own it. Well, good, you can own the house all you want, but if you're not investing in your house, if you're not giving anything out, if you're not bettering it and putting the siding on and doing all those things that want people to be able to, to want something from your house, then it's not gonna, it's nothing's gonna ever happen. And that's what's happening. We're sitting on a filtration plant, we're sitting on distribution. So in other words, we're sitting on money that we could have coming in as income and things is going out. We're borrowing, borrowing, borrowing instead of being able to be the giver. We gotta.
Would that reduce that water debt, that water debt fee that we get on the water bill? Cause I don't know what's going on with that.
Well, well, let me, that good, good question there too, PA. Let, let me explain that to our citizens a little bit better. So with our water rate, again, I have to say this and reiterate this, these are decisions that should have been made years ago to be able to raise our water rates. Our water racing, what we pay helps with the maintenance and maintaining our filtration plant. Let me say that again. It helps with maintaining and the upkeep of our filtration plant. So when we're talking about the rates and raising the rates, because you have to maintain it, you have to keep it up in order to operate. And so that's what the state is looking at now. So even with our lead water lines that we were talking about, you're seeing that happening, thanks to a lot of things that, that, um, administration here in the past have allowed and, and put some things in place that we're getting the lead water lines that state mandated to get fixed. There was things that state mandated that needed to be fixed in our water filtration plant. So what happened was because we had never and we were not raising our water race like it was supposed to be, you had, um, you had, you got the $2.50 per month that your water rate increased. Then you turned around after your $2.50 increase, you had another $2.50 that goes over here into the kitty. So you have $5 that, $5 some odd cents that your water rate increased, but $2.50 over here in the kitty to say, hey, this is to show the state, this is to show the treasury department that you can maintain, that you'll be able to repay this debt, these bills that we're, that we're, um, we're giving you the money in advance to be able to maintain and fix up your water filtration plant and to bring it to, um, compliance. So you have this money over here in the bank. So because we haven't done a great job and it's not, it's not a secret, we haven't done a great job of, of being bill payers. We haven't done a great job of paying our bills on time and paying consumers and, and customers on time and contractors on time. So the state is smart enough to say, hey, listen, we're not going to get caught up in that. We're gonna put your money over here. So that your money over here, this $2.50 you're gonna have over here to the left, that's for you to maintain and to, uh, for your citizens to pay for the water, um, consumption that they're using. This $2.50 over here, so this nine point some million dollars that you gotta pay back and at 1% or $6 million that we gotta pay back at 1% rate, it is a nine million, that we gotta pay back at a 1% interest rate. We're gonna make sure that you're gonna be able to repay that by putting $2.50 over here in this kitty. So, and there's some more things that's going on that we have to do, um, because it's required by Eagle. We were almost at 100, at 100 years of not having the improvements in our water system. And because of the infrastructure and how things were built, we were blessed as a city of Muskegon Heights to be able to still maintain and operate without any issues and no problems. But, but the state said, listen, so that we don't have those problems, we need to start correcting these things now. So we are ahead of schedule. And matter of fact, we're moving faster and much swifter. I mean, we have our, our leaders, our directors and our interim city manager now, um, that are doing a wonderful job of, of making sure that we stay abreast of the things that's happening. They have mandated, we have to have all water lines, lead lines replacing the city of Muskegon Heights by the year 2037. But we are already probably at 60% of that. So don't quote me at 60%, cause we might be a little bit higher and maybe just a tad bit lower, but I know we're over 55 plus percent done with replacing our lead water lines and some of it is not due to, um, us not being quick and fast, PA. Some of it is because the lack of knowledge of our citizens of letting the people in the home so that they can actually get these things done. But it is, I mean, it is imperative that we know the facts that our citizens, I mean, I don't care if we gotta have a town hall meeting to let our citizens know, yes, your water weights will, will increase. Why are your water rates increasing? PA, let me tell you why our water rates increasing. Because we don't have 10,000 citizens, 10,000 homes anymore. We're operating at 34, 33,000 homes, 33, 3,300 homes. We don't have that. So when that tax base have increased, where did it go? It still was there, it just went to the 3,300 homes. So now we increase our home base, we increase our tax base, we put more businesses in that water consumption, we put more, uh, housing units in that more water consumption. Then maybe then, in the future, we can eliminate and take our rate and, and take our rate down. But guess what? Because we're not there, we will continue to have a rate increase for the next two or three years, PA. And it's just mandatory. And if we don't do it within our own city and we lose our water filtration plant, if you think you're paying that rate now, just think if you don't own it, how much you gonna be paying?
Right, yeah. Okay, we got, we got, we, we gotta roll. Last question, think it's the last question.
This is a lot, man. I tell you, we gotta have town hall, man.
Why, um, why should people vote for you next week, Tuesday?
I say, Ben, I'm dedicated and committed, I mean, not only to this community, I'm committed to our children, I'm committed to the work that has to be presented before us. I love what I do. I'm a business owner, I'm a homeowner, I'm a father. Me, these are things that I do because I love. I choose to live in Muskegon Heights. I didn't have to stay here in Muskegon Heights, but I live and I choose to live in the heart of Muskegon Heights because this is what I do. Um, and so my investment and the time and energy that I put into, uh, my communities because I love it. And regardless, PA, and I, and I say this, regardless if I'm elected or not, man, I'm gonna continue to do what I've been doing my entire life and that's giving back to my people, giving back to our kids. So, um, I, I, I heard that the other day saying that, okay, well, you know, kids voted on this and kids did that. Man, I tell you what I found out. I say, the things I've done for our youth and our children over the years and especially our young adults with expungement claims and other things that goes on, I can't even name it. I, I don't even, because I don't look for a pat on my back, a pat on my shoulder. So I'm just thankful to God that I'm able, I'm here, I'm thankful God that I'm able to be in a position to give back. Me, I've been scandalized, I've been put down and, and even talked about, you know, and I'm like, man, I'm doing all this and me, I'm the one that go home and can't sleep at night. I'm the one that, that's worrying about how we gonna get things done. And it seemed like those that are trying, PA, are the ones that get scandalized and, and, and put down more. But, you know, um, you know, that's just the way that it is. That's the way it is. And when you're doing the work, you might be talked about. So you gotta be, have those strong genes.
Well, got some online comments. William Kitchen said, greetings to you brothers. Thank you.
Man, greetings to you, young man. I think, um, you're, you're running a great race, man, and wishing you the best as well of your future.
Very proud of, very proud of William. Jay Driver down in Houston, Texas says, why does the city continue to hire interim city managers? Why are you reluctant as it appears to hire permanent leadership?
Well, well, Jay, uh, let me, let me, let me answer the second part first. Why are you? Because those key words stand out to me. So why are you reluctant? So first, let me make sure that that's clear that I'm not reluctant to hire a city, a permanent city manager. I've always spoke and I, my vote is continue to move forward and to hire someone. In the process of now, the first part of your question, why does the city continue to hire interim? Is because, um, some of the things that we're doing with, um, with trying to get, um, some of the background checks that, that have came up, it's been a long process. And also, um, things that, decisions from others. You know, you're only one person, uh, when you're up there voting. Um, and anybody that watched any of the meetings that I've been a part of since I'm reading that, Jay, I, I mean, I, I know you, I know some of your family. Anybody that hears some of the things that I'm saying, even in this last term, we had two individuals that ran from interim. And I said, why don't we take and do a background check on both people? What was told to me was, we don't normally do that. We don't do this and that's not that. But guess what? Right now, we're still trying to figure out how to make sure that we get the first background check back to us. So a lot of times when I'm up there and I'm.
They don't have access to the state trooper? I mean, no process on, I know we got access to. They don't have access to the state trooper? Um, I mean, no problem. I know we got access to
Hey, man, listen
Background checks, state, state police.
Listen, that, that's another, that's a whole nother conversation, PA, when you're talking about what we went through with um MML. Um, people want to sit back and they talk, but again, PA, on another, another show, when you want to bring me back, I'll, again, you asked me the course, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer it straightforward. I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. We paid $19,000 to MML. They did not give us a full research. I mean, we had 17 candidates, 17. When we came down to um getting ready for the, the, the list of that was gonna be presented to us, then it was brought to us, say, out of these 17, these are the five people that I recommend that you all take. I said to them, well, why can't we choose out of the 17, all the people that we think, let's go through the list?
Well, why they couldn't take that 17, 19 million or 17 million and and contracted out with Sherline Staffing? That's what, that's what forward thinking black government does. That's what the cities like Atlanta and Dallas and Detroit. Okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah. Again, when you're talking about forward thinking and 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 again, being open minded and business minded, we all gotta sit on, sit on the same page and not be envious of anybody because they're, they're, they're knowledgeable or they have the mindset to move things forward. But we gotta be able to listen. And one of the things I, I said in the debate is that we got seven people up there. We need to use all seven to their strengths. And I don't think that we're all being used to the seventh of our strengths.
Wow, um, Stan Bishop, Stan the man said Ronald Jenkins needs to be mayor. I don't live out there, but he is the guy.
Stan, I appreciate you, young man. Appreciate, always have, man, always have.
Yes, sir. Uh, Ramon Avery, how can we come together as a team for Meskegan Heights? Love y'all.
Man, coming together as a team, we just gotta, we, we gotta believe in, we gotta believe in each other again. Put the selfishness and the animosity to the side and why something can't get done and just believe that something can get done. And that'll change the mindset of our people.
How can people find out more information about you? You got a Facebook page, website, telephone number? What do you?
Yeah, man, and listen, my, my Facebook page is there, my Ronald Jenkins Facebook page is there. Um, my Lake Hawks page is there, my Lake Hawks and Flag page is there. Um, my business number is there, my cell phone number is available, uh, my email is available. However you want to, if you want to meet me, me one on one, you can call the clerk at the city hall. She'll set up a meeting. I will meet with you at any time and get a better clarity, better clear understanding of each other. And maybe you need to get a better understanding of me. I'm open and willing to meet with anybody at any time. I have no reason to sugarcoat or hide anything. I'm open minded to be receptive and to give back to you as a community, so.
I want to say this before we go, thank you, thank you uh for participating in our election forum. We've been doing these forums for a while, and as of late, a lot of them comments in Meskegan Heights feel like they don't have to show up to these forums. And you came out, you probably didn't have to, you didn't have anything to hide, you didn't take votes for granted. And I just want to say personally, thank you for coming out uh to talk to the people. I don't stay in the city of Meskegan Heights. Yes, got property there, um, got business there. I don't, I'm not a voting voice. I don't have the voice to vote. Uh, but you came out for the citizens can, can hear you speak uh with pretty much all newcomers, which you didn't have to. So I want, I want to commend you. Uh, other comments are coming in. I know you, you, you probably go to your Facebook page, answer some of these questions. Dominique Smith said, what are some steps we are taking to attract businesses? I can tell you what, Dominique, I'm over here in Ghana, West Africa, where the African American mayors uh association, African American mayors USA, USA is here on a trade mission. And uh, the only mayor I know that's here that's black, that's from our state uh is Mayor uh Marcus Mohammed from the city of Benton Harbor, who I'm getting ready to go meet with in a little bit. It's late here, it's uh, it's, it's, it's late in the evening, it's a four hour time difference. So I, I'm not saying you gotta come here to get business, but you gotta go sometime, you gotta go to where the money is at.
PA, our interim, our interim, um, Meriwether, she's doing a good job of, of coming through with some different ideas as well. Um, as to how to uh entertain and um invite in some more um, some better businesses. So, I mean,
She's a good worker, man.
Yeah, yeah, she's committed, so very committed to our city. Ms. Vines, thank you so much as well. Um, always much respect to you and 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 definitely Mr. Vines. I mean, you guys are awesome, great examples of of leaders in our community. And one of the things that we do and things that I do here is try to make sure that I'm serving people like yourselves and 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 representing you all. So I really appreciate that comment.
Linda Vines said, it has to be frustrating for you. Thank you, Ronald, for weathering the storm. Stay strong. That's the, that's the queen from the first couple right there, her, her and Dwight. All right, family, thank you, thank you, uh, Ronald, for being available.
All right, take care, man.
Continue this conversation, even though I'm out of the country. I'm trying to get as many candidates on as I can uh to talk about election before it happen next week, Tuesday.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, man.